Recording in progress.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three Lewisville Plan and Commission meeting with a roll call, please.
Commissioner Basket.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Here.
Commissioner Osterman.
Here.
Commissioner Krantz.
Here.
Commissioner Choi.
Here.
And Chair Brownice.
Here. Thank you. With that, a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? I.
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing no dissent. Carries. Thank you. Then we're looking at the November minutes. If there's anybody who wanted to make corrections, updates, deletions, additions, subtractions. Multiplications are rare, but go ahead.
I'll move the approval of the minutes.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Excuse me. Well, now it'll put an up for public comment for items that are not on this evening's agenda. If I could ask somebody to check the Zoom, just to be certain that is not on my screen this evening. In the clear? All right. With that, then, we'll move into our first item of new business. And it looks like Amelia is on it.
Over there, do you want to ask what there's any?
Yeah, so, well, oh, yeah. So I'll run through the whole script here, and that will include questions of that. So I will now open the public hearing on a request for a final PUD SRU plat easement vacation and annexation agreement amendment for thirteen oh three Empire Road. Excuse me. The purpose of the hearing is to receive evidence regarding the application materials and provide a public forum for all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before the planning commission. The procedure for the public hearings hearing will be as follows. First, there'll be a presentation and testimony by city staff, followed by questions from the planning commission to staff. Next, we will have a presentation and testimony by the applicant, followed by questions from the planning commission to the applicant. After these two presentations, members of the public who have joined this meeting in person, by computer, or telephone may speak regarding the application. Anyone who would like to speak and in person is asked to complete a speaker card. Use the raise hand function if participating by Zoom or star nine if calling in by telephone. Please limit your comments to three minutes per person. Pooling of comments is not permitted. The purpose of public comment is to receive public testimony and not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment. Period. The applicant and staff will then be allowed to make a closing statement. I will then close the public hearing, and no further testimony or other evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. The planning commission will discuss the matter and may approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record. All testimony must be presented after stating your name and city of residence. Does anyone participating in this hearing object to the procedure I've described? Seeing none. Do we have notification?
Yes. Public notice was met as required.
And do we have any disclosures?
I have one, Commissioner. I'm a businessman, local businessman, and I have clients of many kinds. In this case, one of the applicant team is such a client. This has not created a bias in my mind, and I believe I can evaluate this proposal without any bias. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Take it away.
All right. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. This is Resolution nineteen, series twenty twenty-three, which includes a final planned unit development, special review use, plat easement vacation, and annexation agreement amendment. So here you have the vicinity map. This is on the northeast corner of Pine Street and Highway forty-two. There is a current building on the property, but it is vacant. Just a little bit of background. So it is zoned industrial, and it is platted. The subject property is up there in green, and the blue portion is what's referred to as city shops in your staff packet. That's a city-owned property that is currently leased out to Avid for Adventure. And then to the farthest east, you have the city water treatment plant. And then this area was annexed in nineteen eighty-six, and so that's what the yellow outline is. That's the boundaries of the city of Louisville. Just to give an overview of the proposal before I jump into some particulars. So there's a PUD and an SRU request. Those establish the use and design, and they do include waiver requests. There's also plat and easement vacation. There are no changes to any of the property lines, but there are easements that are proposed to be vacated and to be recorded. And then finally, there is an annexation agreement amendment request. There is a nineteen eighty-six agreement that I'll talk a little bit more about later, and that includes language on a no-building zone, and the applicant is proposing that that, that the agreement be amended to remove that language. So I'm going to go into just sort of a high level, you know, the highlights of the site plan on the PUD. And I'm going to move from the right, which is the east, to the left, which is the west. So starting there at the top right, that northeast corner, that's where the trash enclosure, loading dock, and fire access lane are on the property. Then moving down south, you've got the parking lot. And then you also have immediately to the left, that larger white block. That's the northern portion of the building that contains the actual distillery use. And then below it is the tasting and event space portion of the building. And then along the bottom of the site is the proposed trail, pedestrian and bicycle trail along the south property line. Then you'll also notice that there's bike parking, which is immediately accessible from the, from the trail, just below the parking lot. Then moving westward, there is preserved open space in the middle or open area, which is sort of notated here as a detention, detention pond A. And then there, basically at the, at the end of the property, all the way west, is this historic building. And I'll talk a little bit about that here. I'm calling it a historic building because it is currently in the process with the Historic Preservation Commission to evaluate it for rehabilitation and restoration. It does certainly have an interesting history, although it's not yet landmarked. Again, they're in the process of that. It's interesting. It's actually currently at the city shops property, just a couple of lots away. And it's being, or it was until recently used as storage. Its original use was as a metal, metal shop on Main Street. So if you all are familiar with the museum campus, that what's now like a courtyard area, that's actually the old foundation of this building that's proposed to be moved, restored, and rehabilitated and placed on the site in that location. And then all the way to the west, there is, past the properties, this is actually in a city-owned parcel, there's a proposal for an orchard. That orchard would be for the use of the distillery and, of course, the enjoyment of, of guests and people along Highway forty-two. And because it is in city property, there is a maintenance agreement that staff and the applicants are working on that'll be finalized prior to city council, making sure that we all know who's in charge of taking care of the fruit orchard. So the plat proposal reduces the size of current drainage easements, and it also amends existing utility and irrigation easements, and adds a trail easement on the south end. Then it removes reference to the no-building zone. So just a technicality, it's the annexation agreement that actually sets the no-development or no-building area, but it was later notated on the two thousand and five plat. And so an update to the plat would remove that as proposed by the applicant. So to get a little bit into the analysis, I'm going to focus on two aspects of the PUD. I'm going to start with parking. So this property is subject to the IDDSG because it is zoned industrial. However, as you read in your staff packet, this is an SRU. It's a special review use, and so it's not contemplated in the IDDSG because it's not an industrial use as such. And so in these cases, you know, staff looks for other relevant parking standards, and there is section seventeen twenty in the code. So that's what we use to evaluate the parking standards. Staff finds that the parking is met on-site as required in section seventeen twenty. So just to make that clear distinction, the number of spaces that are on-site, staff finds those meet the requirements. But then in addition, the applicant has actually requested or proposed a shared parking agreement that would accommodate overflow parking. We've drafted and are in the works between staff and the applicant to finalize that agreement. It'll be ready prior to city council. But, you know, this is basically to accommodate overflow parking. You can see at the top right, that's the area of the city shops that was proposed to be used. This has gone through review with facilities and also with the current tenant there. All the interested parties have, have reviewed this. And then just to note, you know, there is, of course, a private property between the subject property in green and then the city shops in blue. And so part of the shared parking agreement requires that there be an access and trail maintenance agreement in place across the private property. So we get into the SRU plat and the easement vacation. So as I mentioned before, this is an eating and drinking establishment, so it is a SRU in the industrial zone district. And the plat is required to record new easements. Staff finds that in both cases, all of the requirements and the review criteria are met for the SRU and the plat. And there, there's some overlap between the two categories of review, so I'll just kind of give you a few highlights. The staff finds that this project would bring a local business to the city, which serves comprehensive plan and economic vitality, also provide a transition between the industrial uses that are allowed on this area of the city, and then the downtown area to the west. And then finally, the site design is situated and designed with reference to the context of that immediate area being open space to the north and to the south, and then, of course, industrial farther east. I do just want to take a moment to note that there are two conditions on this proposal staff is recommending. The second one basically says that the applicant has to go undergo a third referral and address all of the comments that were in the comment letter in your staff packet. I just want to say staff doesn't think, the idea here is that that doesn't impact any of the remaining pieces, don't impact the site design, or the easements, or the site plan in any way, any of the things that the planning commission is reviewing tonight. It's really finalizing drafts of the agreements that everybody's already seen, making sure the paperwork is in the right order, and all of that will certainly be totally cleaned up and finalized before city council. But that's, that's where that stands currently. And then I'll end here by talking about the annexation agreement amendment. So again, this is part of the application because of the no-building zone that was established in nineteen eighty-six. The site plan necessitates an amendment because, as you can see up here looking at that in the bottom right, that green line, the eastern boundary, actually intersects with the main building. So regardless, in order to develop it, the property as proposed, it does need some type of amendment to the agreement. The applicant has requested that that no-build zone be removed entirely. However, staff is recommending that it remain in place, but that the eastern boundary basically move so that it can accommodate the main building structure but still be in place. And there are two main reasons why staff is making this recommendation and why the no-build zone still performs an important role. One is that it maintains a smooth transition of open area along Highway forty-two. So again, there's the open spaces on the south, open space to the north, and the open area between the two, you know, maintains that sort of open visual, visual aesthetic along the, along the road. And then the second is that it provides an important buffer between what's an industrial zone and then an important intersection of Highway forty-two and Pine, and then the downtown area to the west. And the idea here is that, you know, the, the staff finds that the application is, again, you know, it's respectful of this area, but this is an industrial zone. And so let's say that the PUD is approved, but then not developed, and the property was sold or developed as somebody who could use it for an industrial use without maintaining the annexation agreement. You'd have an annexation agreement on the record that allowed that industrial use, only to be governed by the setbacks on the property. So that's why staff still believes that there's an important role that this zone can, can maintain and is recommending that it remain amended, but remain in the annexation agreement. So with that, staff's recommendation is approval of Resolution nineteen, series twenty twenty-three. I'm not, you had to read this once, so I'm not going to make you listen to this very long condition. But number one is just to capture staff's intent that I just described about the annexation agreement, that the no-building zone remain but be amended to allow the proposed development. And then number two is what I've described as well. It requires that the application go out on a third internal referral to address some of those outstanding comments and coalescence that I mentioned. And I will also note, just from a process and timeline perspective, the applicants already submitted a full, a full package to be sent out on referral. Yeah. And so that is my presentation. Happy to answer any questions. And also, of course, the applicants are here and ready for a presentation, I'm sure.
Thank you very much. Questions for Amelia? Please, Commissioner Basket.
I have a couple of questions. I don't think they're hard ones, worried, though. So you were going to mention the history behind the no-build zone, because I did find that in the memo and thought that was pretty interesting. Did you want to remark on that anymore? It's an unusual covenant.
Yes, it is an unusual covenant. And I, I'm not sure what I mentioned in the staff packet.
That it was part of the gateway for Highway forty-two and Empire Road, which I thought was fascinating. And this proposal indeed does maintain that and improve the, is that
Exactly. Yes, that's right. Yes. So, so in reviewing the no-build zone and the annexation agreement, staff went back and did look at the city council records and the, and the packet and the recommendations. There's not a ton of detail in there, to be honest, about, about the reasoning. But yes, exactly, that it provides a buffer and it provides sort of a, because again, this was zoned industrial with Boulder County, actually before it was even annexed into the city. And so that's also part of the history here, that it was zoned industrial, it provides this buffer and transition by maintaining that no-building zone. So I don't know if that answers your question, but yeah.
Yes. I've got a couple more if I can.
Please.
They're pretty quick ones. So I noticed in looking at the parking, there was EV parking. Does that mean there are chargers?
You know, I'm actually going to request that Director Zuccaro hop in here, because I don't know that, I don't know which are EV, which parts are required. I know I reviewed them against the code, but I don't remember if they're, what our requirements are for charging versus EV-ready.
Sure. So I'll have to look that up. I didn't review the plans to see what the ratio was, but we do, on a development like this, we have a ratio of three categories. Some of them have to have chargers, some of them have to have the electricity ready for the chargers, and some of them just have to have the conduit. So there's three different categories. So I assume that there's some that will actually have chargers, but the, the number, I'd have to look up.
And I'm happy to do that at the end. I know I reviewed it against the code. I just don't remember what the actual ratio was.
Well, I'm just curious, because I think it's appropriate to have the EV chargers at that location while people are tasting. Let's see. So the trail along Empire Road is a crusher fine trail?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And I wondered if that was why a concrete trail wasn't evaluated for that?
Yeah. So when, so this went out to Parks and Open Space and all of their recommendations. And I think the idea is to, to have less impervious surface, and then also that it still does meet ADA standards. So that's my understanding of how they evaluated that versus having it be paved.
Okay. And then my last question relates to the trail as well. So the off-site parking agreement, which I think is a brilliant idea for when there's big events at the old shops, city shops, which is basically one lot on the other side of this. So it's very walkable. Is there a trail, existing trail connecting the two?
That's a great question. So there is sort of a, there's a partial, there's sort of partial improvements there, and there is what's, what's clearly been used as a trail.
Actual trail.
Right, exactly. And so one of the details that we need to figure out is, is where the, the requirement to have like an ADA accessible crusher fine trail would live, whether it would live in the existing access agreement, or whether it would be sort of an additional separate agreement. But yes, there is a very clear area. There's a, there's an easement that already exists that it would, that it would go along.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Commissioner Choi?
Thanks, Chair. Couple of questions for you. Was there a consideration of the parking on the north side, north of the fire lane, on the same city property that extends down that blue strip?
You mean to have the overflow parking up there?
Yeah, as opposed, as opposed to crossing over private property.
You know, I actually don't know if that was discussed. The applicant might know. But I will say, I don't think that would be desirable for a number of reasons. One is the fire access lane being clear. The other is that that actually is sort of in use in some way. And so I don't, putting parking in there in an area that, that does need to have some movement within it probably is not desirable anyway. And I do know, anyway, so that, that's the answer to that question. And using the improvements that already exist was also, you know, part of the consideration of having it be on the city shops property.
Okay. And then the other question I had was related to, you know, the consideration of adding in that trail on the south side of what the, the property is now, when it butts up against Highway forty-two, there are no other improvements in terms of crosswalks or pedestrian access across Highway forty-two from the west side when it's Pine Street? Was that going to be something that the city was going to also undertake to re-stripe and create additional signals for pedestrians and/or a left protected turn from southbound forty-two onto Empire?
Yep. So I, I don't know the details, but I know that the applicant and, and Public Works Department has reviewed all of this and sort of aligning it with Highway forty-two plans. My understanding is that there's no current specific call to do, I mean, there's a general call to do improvements at that location, but the specificity isn't sort of nailed down at this point. And my understanding is that there's not going to be any types of improvements required with this application. But that certainly was a, a long discussion between Public Works and staff. So there is sort of a, a trail connectivity to a location that is planned to be improved.
Yeah, please. On the Highway forty-two improvement plan, in particular, do you have any?
Oh, I didn't, but I found the number of EVs. Sorry, what was the question on the Highway forty-two plan?
Just accessing Empire Road in general, if you want to restate it.
Yeah. Part, part of my question was, there's no protected left turn on southbound forty-two onto Empire. And, you know, I would imagine, especially on a Thursday or Friday night, this would, would add, you know, potential traffic going through there on what otherwise would also be, you know, potentially like a commuting time. And that intersection already gets a little bit overloaded. And I guess I was partially just wondering what evaluations the city either went through or would go through if there were impacts to that intersection, you know, based on stuff that wasn't projected, if there weren't improvements included in this right now. What, you know, what would be the trigger where the, where the city would look back and say that there would be something necessary?
You mean a trigger? So the Highway forty-two plan, so I think there's a couple of questions in there, just to try to clarify. So I think we could look up the Highway forty-two plan. I'm not sure if, I, I think what you're saying is there's no protected left turn lane now.
Right.
So there's one question is, with the Highway forty-two implementation, would there be a protected left turn lane? So I'll try to look that up here as we go along, because I'm not sure exactly at that intersection. You know, on single-lot developments like this, we often don't do traffic studies because it's already platted. It's a use by right. We're not looking for, you know, that more in-depth traffic study where there might be broader mitigation. I don't know if there was traffic analysis done at all for this?
Yeah, sorry. So when I was speaking before, I was mostly about the, the actual pedestrian and bike lane. But in terms of your question about traffic, yeah, there was no request to do any additional traffic analysis, and Public Works reviewed it and did not make any of those requests or recommendations.
Okay. Even with the transition from the current zoning to the proposed use?
Specifically for exactly this application, yes.
Yeah. Yeah. I think they felt it was minor enough that it wouldn't require a traffic study. Even though it is a change in use, there would probably be more traffic for the restaurant portion than a typical industrial use, depending on what went in there.
Okay. Thank you.
EVs?
Sure. So there's the proposal for nine EV-installed spaces on the site, six EV-ready, and thirteen EV-capable on-site is what I'm reading on here.
Great. Thank you. Additional questions?
Questions?
Hey, Amelia. Thanks. Just a question regarding waiver number five. It states eliminating the standard for loading dock screening. I'm imagining the adjacent lot is also industrial-zoned, but maybe could be changed to some of these commercial changes that we're proposing tonight. Could you just help me understand where the loading dock is? I think I know where it is, but I'm wondering in foresight, if there is another building placed on the adjacent lot, would we still be able to shield that area from the loading?
And I'm assuming you're meaning the industrial zone lot to the east, right?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Okay. I'm going to walk away from the microphone, point to something and come back.
Okay.
Um, can, can you use the mouse at all? People, if they're watching on Zoom, they can see the mouse better.
Okay. Okay, that was the Luddite version. And then here's, I don't think, there we go. Okay, there's the mouse. Loading dock is right there. So in terms of its impact on the adjacent property, which is currently a storage facility, right? But yes, I understand your point that if it came under, you know, as an SRU, sort of two, two pieces there, right, is I think evaluating the, the screening from the adjacent property being so far away. It's more an internal screening, right? Especially when it's kind of interior to the site like this, that they're getting an exemption from. But also, there is landscaping along, I guess it's not up in that corner, but there's landscaping along part of the property. And then, you know, there's also like a trash enclosure up there, up on the north side. So, I mean, I don't think it was evaluated from that perspective that you've just brought up, but I also think it's, this screening wouldn't necessarily affect that piece of it regardless.
It seems like it's mostly towards the northwest. The loading dock faces the northwest area, and it's shielded a little bit to the adjacent property as it's planned.
Additional questions?
I had one additional question. Sorry, can I just finish?
Please.
Oh, just one more. Can you comment on the lighting? I'm imagining there'll be some pedestrian traffic from the overflow lot to this one. Has there been plans for lighting along Empire Road?
You mean on the road or on the site?
Oh, on the, on the crusher fine trail.
On the crusher fine trail, yes. Okay. So I can look this up for you. I'm not remembering where this landed right now. But I know we did have that discussion of whether that was something that Parks would recommend or not, and I'll have to just sit down and refresh my memory. But yeah.
Thanks. Did you have something to add?
Yeah. I think when the, when the questions are done, I just wanted to make one more statement about the buffer issue, too. Just to be really clear that with this development, staff really supports this development. We think it's very respectful of the buffer, as Amelia said. You know, the, it's a good transition into downtown. I think we are concerned about if this, as, as you've all seen, sometimes PUD is, many times PUDs get approved and they don't get implemented. The annexation agreement would go, you know, it would run with the land regardless of what happens with this PUD. And some of those industrial uses that we can see here, I've actually received a phone call about a storage unit. That's a use by right in the industrial district. So as an example, if, you know, this PUD wasn't implemented, but we amend the annexation agreement, and this development would, you know, goes away, which we don't want to happen, several years into the future, the storage unit development could go in, and that buffer would no longer, no longer be there to protect that gateway aesthetic. So I think staff's trying to propose, hopefully, what is a win-win, where the buffer would in effect go away for this development, but it wouldn't go away permanently. So the, the language that we're proposing is to that effect. So the, the language that we're proposing is to that effect with, with our proposed change to that agreement. So I just wanted to give a little clarification to that as well.
All right, thank you. Commissioner, can I ask?
I think you've pretty much answered what one of my main question was. What was the, like, what would be the expiration date? The, the PUD has an expiration date, but the plat, what about the plat and the, and the SRU?
So?
The SRU, so I'm just wondering how those expiration dates coincide?
Right. So the annexation agreement does not expire. It would run with the land and forever until amended, if it's ever amended. The plat also would not expire. Once that plat's recorded, it's good until amended. The SRU expires if they don't implement it. I think it's after a year. PUDs expire within three years and they can be extended, but they will expire after three years if there's no request for an extension.
That helps a lot. So what you're proposing, just making sure I understand what staff is proposing, is that the changes to the annexation agreement and the plat would be contingent upon, would have, would?
As it relates to the buffer?
The PUD.
The PUD being implemented, not just being approved. Is that?
So that's certainly something that we could consider. The way it's currently drafted is that it would amend the location of the eastern, of the eastern boundary, not, so it's not related to the approval of the PUD or not. The idea is to create an annexation agreement amendment that would allow, you know, additional development, but that would still maintain what is currently maintained here in this proposal, which is that buffer area that you see in that open space. And then, of course, the historic building, right, being included in that. So it's, it's not that it's contingent on the PUD, it's that that's the new no build zone.
So regardless of whether or not the PUD is implemented, the no build zone would be changing, but changing, but staff is proposing that it change slightly and not be entirely eliminated in perpetuity?
Exactly, that's the proposal, yes.
Thank you.
I apologize, I had that wrong then, what the staff's proposal was. I wasn't aware.
And, and the, and the reason being that it, that it makes a clean agreement that is in perpetuity, as is, it allows some additional development on this site, right? It's an underutilized site as it stands, but that it still maintains what staff has evaluated as a, a meaningful buffer area.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, everybody else's questions were great, so I don't have, I just have one small question. And it is, what is, is the capacity, do we know the capacity of the tasting room and the capacity of, when, for an event at, you know, at maximum, the maximum capacity? And how that relates to the parking? Because I know that the industrial parking, we're evaluating this against the industrial parking design guidelines, the, the, IDSG. And so if this were a commercial space or a restaurant space, what, how much, what is the difference in how much parking we would expect to see? I think it's a really creative, you know, idea to, to use an overflow lot, but I'm just, I don't really understand the numbers too well.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think you've, you've identified what makes this an interesting evaluation exercise and, and, and review, which is that we're not using IDDSG for parking because the IDDSG only has standards for industrial uses. It doesn't contemplate anything like what is being proposed here, even though this eating and drinking establishment is allowed by SRU. So we have to look elsewhere. And so staff looked at seventeen, section seventeen twenty, and that section has citywide standards that can be applied for a, and a variety of uses. So using those numbers, that's how we parked, you know, and that's how, how the site is parked, using those ratios.
So was that not, so it's not based on the maximum capacity, but can you still tell me what the capacity would be for an event?
Yeah, okay. So I think there are several different questions there. So there's the actual event space, and then there's the tasting room. Because those are slightly different uses, they are evaluated in slightly different ways. So the tasting room has an actual layout, right? It would, it would have seats and tables and what have you. And so this applicant provided an actual exhibit, and then they base those numbers on, on the square footage and on the layout of the property, or of the structure. And that is what seven, seven, section seventeen twenty, remember the subsection says three, I think it's three, one space for three seats, something like that. That's how the tasting room is parked. The event space is parked a little differently because it's an event space, it's meant to have different types of seating options for somebody. So that's parked by a restaurant use for square footage. That was the reference that we used. It wasn't really a perfect fit, fit in seventeen twenty. But so staff and planning commission have the ability to try to find something that works better. So that's what we used, restaurant square footage. And then, and then the, the distillery, which you haven't mentioned, but the distillery is parked by employee again per section seventeen twenty. So I'm happy to pull up the exhibit, if you want to see the tasting room exhibit and the square footages. I don't have that on this screen, but I can pull that up if you, it's also in your packet.
As we look at that a little bit more, a question about the current city property that has the dump station on it. What are the plans there? Are they public? Have they, what, yeah, what's happening there?
I have not discovered that concretely through this process. I don't know if Director DeCaro has any ideas about what the concrete plans are for that, but I'm not aware of any in the near future.
Yeah, I'm not aware that there's any plans for that to go away, yeah.
Great. All right. And then also regarding the orchard, so it's exciting to think about that. What, what are a little bit more of the details there? So is it similar to like where we have kind of protected agricultural space that's operated by somebody else? And in particular, what is the, I'm like, am I allowed to go pick apples?
Wow, that's a really great question. So, you know, I, I don't know if, I don't know how that would work specifically, but I, I think it would be different than an agricultural lease. The idea is that there's a, so Parks is approved, or, you know, reviewed and, and accepted, so to speak, that the plan to have an orchard on this city parcel. The only thing that they've actually requested of the applicant is that there be a clear maintenance agreement, that they actually take care of that orchard. So, you know, in, in our conversations, nothing has come up about leasing the area formally or, and I, I'm actually not sure if that conversation about who, who can pick the apples has come up, so that's a great one that I can bring, bring to them. But that's the only thing that they've been request, they've requested be in place.
Okay. And, and the thought is that they would be maintaining it?
That the applicant would be maintaining and using the orchard.
And then just thinking out further to a different use for the property or something, would that agreement be forced upon a different property owner?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a really great question. And I know in Parks' review, I mean, they've discussed that. And I think the, I don't remember what the current iteration of the agreement language is, but there's, I'm sure there's will be some type, type of clause if the property is sold, what would happen to the orchard and how it would need to be taken care of? But I don't remember it off the top of my head. I can look at the current draft, but it has to go through a second round of city attorney review as well, so it's not really, it's not finalized.
Okay. And then do you have a site plan that shows the current no build line versus proposed that we can pull up?
I don't think I have current versus proposed, but I can toggle back between these two. So in the annexation agreement amendment for staff's proposal, there would actually, there's currently an Exhibit C, sort of an, it's sort of an interestingly written agreement. I don't know if you actually got into the details of it. It says, "We don't need an exhibit." But in our amendment, we're saying we would create an exhibit for exactly this purpose, to show specifically where the line is. But in the absence of having that to access, this is where you can see the line kind of in the middle of the property, even a little bit more than in the middle. And then I'll, I'll toggle back to the site plan, and then it would actually run basically in this direction to accommodate just west of the building. So here.
Just west of the historic building?
No, I'm sorry, just west of the main building. So he, like in this area?
Got it.
Through here, and then, of course, you'll notice there is a land, there is a proposal to have a property, so the staff's language for the agreement amendment would include that landmark, landmark structures can be in the no build zone.
Got it. Thank you. Any additional questions for staff?
On, on that site plan right there, there's also something identified. I don't remember what it was called, a stage, an event stage or something like that, just to the east of that historic building?
Maybe in this area?
Yeah, exactly. Those hash marks there. How is that contemplated in the no building zone?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's a great question. So I think probably some, some better language about the, to make sure we capture any of the sort of immediate surrounding use of it. I mean, I think when staff reviewed it in a general sense, the activation of that space is a positive for the landmark building, to be able to have something there and not just sort of having, sitting on the land. So, yeah, we'll, we'll have to craft that language to make sure that it, that references landmark building and associated, you know, immediate structures or attached structures, something like that. But it, but it wouldn't be, you know, make it also clear that it's not like another building entirely.
Just, just to confirm the existence of that historic building there in that location, that would be non-used, right? Non-occupied, non-permitted, that would just be a building that would be kind of closed up for, for visual benefit? Or, or is there a planned use for that actual building?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think the applicant would be able to better describe all the various planned uses, but it, it's certainly, the placement of it is certainly toward, you know, visual, public visual access. And there's sort of some flex uses, but again, I'm going to leave that to the applicant. I'm sure they'll cover it.
Thanks. Additional questions for staff at this time? Seeing none, thank you very much for the presentation. I'd like to invite the applicant up at this time.
Okay, good evening. My name's Andy Johnson, I'm at DAJ Design. It is an immense pleasure to present this project to you guys. I do have the entire Ironton team here with me. And a little different from how I usually present, I'm actually going to have them tell you all about Ironton, because it's a really cool business and there's a lot to, lot to learn. This has been a long process. I think from when they originally looked at the property, went under contract, we are now either at two years or a little over two years. This is just a final PUD. This is not a preliminary and final, so it's a long process. We had no concept plan. So there was, we are now having these discussions with you for the first time, so it's always nice when we all take that into account, that there's a lot of, a lot of, lot at stake for someone who is looking at investing in Lewisville in this way, and, and this is really a cool project, so. Those are great questions, and I, I do think that our presentation is going to answer a lot of them. I did write everything down, and I'll make sure to go over everybody's question. And if I don't satisfy your answer or the question, we'll, we'll keep going. So with that, I am, I'm very happy to introduce Lance, Callan, and Laura from the Ironton team, for them to tell you all about their cool business.
All right. Thank you, Andy. Appreciate the time tonight, everyone, and yeah, obviously great questions. And I think as we kind of go through the evening, there will be a lot of those questions that'll become more clear. My name's Lance Peterson, I'm one of the co-owners, I live in Denver.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
I live in Denver, Colorado.
Perfect.
And my primary role with the company is the primary financial support, business development. I've been kind of the main person working with DAJ for the last year. We've been, yeah, it was October of last year, I believe, we, we engaged. So we, we've been at this a long time, and before I kind of go into some further details, I'm going to turn it over to Callan and Laura, just to kind of give some of their background also, and they'll be part of this presentation.
Everybody, my name is Callan Romero. I'm also Lance's daughter, so this is a bit of a family affair.
You have residence, please?
I live in Arvada, Colorado. My background is in marketing, so I've been kind of focusing on marketing and business operations for the company. I did go to See Bolder, so go Buffs.
And hi, guys. I'm Laura Walters, I live in Denver. I am the head distiller of the operation, so I come up with all the recipes, and I also help with the distribution side of the business and the tasting room and just general operations of the business.
All right, thanks, guys. Let's see, how do I toggle? Perfect. So before I kind of go into this slide, I just wanted to kind of talk about our relationship with Andy and his team. I, I think they've, they've developed an awesome project, which is going to represent the eastern gateway into Lewisville. Empire obviously goes right into Pine, over to Main Street, to all downtown. I think this project, this could have been a gas station, this could have been a RV storage lot. We bought the property two years ago, and there was no less than, I think, six or seven other bidders on this property. Some of those were storage unit people, some of those were just parking RVs on the property. The seller particularly picked us because they wanted something that the city could embrace. And I think what Andy has designed, you know, with the open space, you know, the, us taking care of the, the city property right up next to 42, maintaining that, that adds to the, kind of the gateway, I think, I think somebody mentioned it's the gate, the Empire Road gateway, or Highway 42 gateway into the city, and the eastern side of the city. So this project, I think, is the best solution to create a, an awesome gateway into that. And I'll just make one comment about, you brought up the, the recycle area and the kind of the city, the, the dump station. We would love to see that kind of gone, especially if we, we're going to do everything we can to beautify that section of, of, of the city. So the access into downtown, the trails, the relationship, open space to the south of us, open space to the north of us. We would love that part of our area also to be, I guess, redeveloped or undeveloped with the, with that dump station. So enough of that. I'm going to just go into some brief background. We are currently located in the River North area of Denver. We're right off of I-70 and I-25. We open in August of 2018. We have an awesome place there. It's about thirty-four thousand square feet, three, three quarters of an acre. We have a huge outdoor vibe. We have an indoor tasting room, we have a production facility, and then a couple other buildings onsite. But we, we have learned a lot being there for the last almost six years, five and a half years. And we've, we've learned that an indoor-outdoor kind of vibe venture is what people love. And having that four-season kind of feel, Andy's developed, I think, you know, an awesome kind of back and forth between the, the indoor spaces and the outdoor spaces. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on these because we'll, Callan and Laura will kind of expand upon them, but farm-to-flas, household spirits, we use a lot of locally sourced products. Somebody was talking about the orchard, that is part of our, we have trees, existing trees in Rhino, that we do harvest different types of things. We have raised garden beds, that'll be part of this, that we, we pull a lot of our kind of cocktail ingredients. Laura pulls a lot of the kind of, the fruits and stuff off of the trees that we do have. So having this opportunity to have an orchard is, is going to be awesome for us. We're a distillery pub. That means we're one of four distillery pub licenses in the state. That means we can serve beer and wine along with our, our in-house made spirits. That's important to us because we can provide something for everyone. Events, I'll let Callan kind of expand upon that, and also the community engagement, that's going to be a big part of our relationship with Lewisville. It's a big part of our, our situation in Rhino right now. We, we host a lot of events, we're very active in the, in the community, and Callan will kind of expand upon that. So.
So you might be wondering why Lewisville. And really, that comes down to Ironton's brand promise, so I want to read you a little snippet of that. So approachable spirits made and enjoyed the Colorado way. What is the Colorado, the Colorado way? Although important, it goes beyond being a Colorado distillery, using locally sourced ingredients and water. It's an emotional state of mind, adventurous, down-to-earth, inclusive, communal. In many ways, it's about squeezing the most out of life and celebrating it with others. Working hard, playing hard, and toasting to it all at the end of the day. And we really feel that the Lewisville community epitomizes that same foundation. Just a few photos of our current space. So since we first opened our doors in 2018, we've been committed to So since we first opened our doors in 2018, we've been committed to supporting our communities, whether that's within the distilling industry, like with Colorado Distillers Guild, or being a part of Colorado Bourbon Women, which is actually at Ironton currently, hosting their annual holiday cocktail party. We're also heavily involved in our neighborhood, the Rhino Art District, who happens to also be at Ironton hosting their holiday party right now. Rhino's been so appreciative of our efforts to maintain an art-centric community with our onsite art studios and art gallery for local up-and-coming artists. Being part of such a connected and supportive community has shown me how important it is to find that in our next location. We have also hosted numerous nonprofit events over the years, partnered with local businesses and organizations, and we always support local when we can in the bar, kitchen, and distillery. In addition, we're honored to incorporate a little piece of Lewisville history into our space with Joe's Metal Shop, which Andy will touch on more later. And finally, we're very excited to be in an area with amazing trails for bikes and pedestrians. We do plan to have bike parking onsite, and we look forward to the future trail connectivity.
All right. And I'm gonna talk to you guys about alcohol now. So obviously, we are a distillery. That means that we're going to have a big production operation onsite. We do wanna do everything that we can to make this a sustainable operation. That is one of our biggest efforts that we're gonna be making in this transition to the new location. I don't have a whole lot of specifics on that right now, but we have been in contact with sustainability experts to help us make those dreams come true. So right now, we're doing pretty much what every distillery is doing, and we just kind of wanna expand on that over the years of our operation by using different sources of energy, recapturing energy where we can in our process, and using that to energize the rest of the operation in the tasting room and the event space. So I will be working on that. That's my one big thing that I would like to see us do as a company. Lance kind of touched on our local ingredients earlier, so that is another sustainability effort that we're doing. We wanna keep our Colorado farmers happy. We wanna see us using their ingredients. So we use all Colorado-sourced grain. And then we also grow a lot of our own ingredients onsite. That's where that big open space is gonna come into play. We're gonna have a lot of herbs that we're gonna use in both the tasting room and the distillery. The orchard, like Lance was saying, right now, we do utilize the fruit that we're growing onsite in smaller ways, but with more fruit, we can do more with it, so that would be amazing. And then, you know, also incorporating a lot of our community with local partnerships in the distillery side. We do a lot of collaborations with breweries, which we would love to do with breweries just on the other side of the road over here. And we can sell all of that in our taproom to being a distillery pub license. We can have all of those offered to the public onsite in our building. Some of the most recent ones that we've done is a partnership with the Veterans Society called Warriors and Whiskey, where a portion of our proceeds went to a veteran-chosen organization, which was really cool. We got to bottle a bunch of whiskey with a bunch of female veterans, and that was really awesome, being a partially female-owned company and female-run company. We also have partnerships for some of our, like, standard products. So we do one with colati roasters and bluegrass, and those we sell both in our store and in theirs. So we have, like, big launch parties where everybody comes, and it's a really great community event. So that's pretty much all in the distillery. Tasting room, again, I don't know if any of you guys have been to Ironton and Rhino, but the tasting room is kind of our heart and soul. It is how we get everybody together. So our biggest thing is creating a very communal environment, super open, just really laid back, like Lance was saying, inside-outside, four-season kind of feel. And it's beautiful. We take great pride in our tasting room. So we would obviously do that here. We wanna make it super family-friendly. We're both moms of two little babies, and we want a place for our kids to grow up that's welcoming and amazing. And we both have little dogs that we love to have running around. So really open to everybody. And again, we are the tasting room pub license, so we can have those local beers and wines. So if you don't wanna have straight whiskey, you can have a glass of wine instead. And we're gonna offer food, obviously, which is great.
So the third side of our business is events. So we do really enjoy bringing people together, whether it's big, small events, public, private events. We plan to have a dedicated indoor/outdoor event space, but that can also flow into our tasting room area. So in our plans, you'll see that it's a really perfect place to host events, such as concerts, markets, weddings, company parties. You name it, we wanna host it. Do wanna clarify that we will ensure that our events do not compete, but rather complement with any city of Lewisville events, and we hope to partake in those events in other ways, such as sponsorships.
So I know we've talked a lot about parking. Millie did a great job, I think, explaining the number of spaces we have onsite, which I believe is just over 80. The city shop has 75. We are working on that connectivity for that overflow parking. It's gonna be rarely used, but it is gonna be there. And we felt it was important enough to get into discussions with the city to make sure we had a solution for some of our larger events. Talking about capacity, I don't know the exact inside tasting room capacity or inside event center, but space as a whole, with those 150 plus or minus parking spaces, we can have a capacity of about 400, or handle a capacity of about 450 people. That is gonna be a very, very rare kind of situation for us. We will be prepared if we are having some, certainly a larger type of event, we can, we will be applying for kind of a special event kind of permit in those events, in those cases. Weddings, we'll be working with the local hotels for shuttle services, so we can reduce the impact in that sense, which we do now also in Rhino. When we have a wedding, we go, we encourage, you know, shuttles back and forth from wherever kind of most of the wedding folks are staying. I think that's it. Before I kind of go to the last slide, distribution. We are actively expanding our footprint across Colorado. We have a third-party distributor that we've engaged with. So you will see us in some of your liquor stores, some of your restaurants, as we kind of expand that part of our business. It's a very important focus for us. And kind of before I turn it back over to Andy to go into some more of the actual PUD details, here's a list of some of the recent accolades we've had. We've been recognized by some fairly high Colorado publications. 5280 Magazine voted us best distillery. Westward, we've been best distillery taproom, best Colorado distiller right here, more than once. Colorado Business Magazine, best distillery runner-up. We've received numerous spirit awards. We have very high-quality spirits. And Colorado Sun, I believe, last year, best Denver Metro Distillery. So I think we're an awesome business, and it's mainly because of these two. They're the day-to-day people that are working to earn us these types of awards. And we look forward to being up here in Lewisville and immersing ourselves kind of into your community and continue, I guess, earning awards. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Andy, and he'll go through some of the PUD-type details.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Okay. That's the fun part. Now I get the peas and carrots. All right. So a little bit of context. I think it is important to really study where this is in Lewisville. So you can see aerial photo highlighting the property. It is that strange triangular property that is our eastern gateway into Lewisville. It is a site that has remained empty for a long time, and a lot of people have looked at this, and a lot of people have really struggled to figure out how to make this thing go. So as we look at a map of Lewisville, you can see the site located just east of Highway 42, right adjacent to downtown. And I think that's an important characteristic. It is a bit adjunct to downtown. I would say that with the connectivity that we're proposing and with future connectivity, which I will talk about in a little bit, I think that it actually becomes a part of downtown. And I think that's a cool aspect of this very kind of unusual site. It also has an area of connectivity around it. And not, you know, we can talk a lot about how do we get there from Lewisville, but I think also surrounding communities is a really important component to talk about. And as our trail system continues to develop, as we encourage our trail systems to develop, I think, you know, even better connectivity with developments like this will make that argument much more potent, and hopefully, something that is useful in the future. So in the 1980s, this property was annexed, as was discussed earlier. It does have the public use dedication satisfied through the plating. The annexation was in 1986. I have read all the documents that was available for this, both City Council and Planning Commission. There was no discussion on the no-build line, which I found really interesting. However, there was some very funny kind of nuance-ical discussions around how this property accidentally got put into the mix of open space. And they just didn't know. So I think that that obviously got retracted from Boulder County, and it was under private ownership, and then it was annexed through, I'm not actually sure how to pronounce it, I think it's the Trusol annexation. So the red line is the no-build line, just for clarity. And it was aligned, maybe not so arbitrarily, but I think when we start looking through it, you'll see that maybe there was some arbitrariness to it. It is essentially the western side of the current industrial building that's on that site. This is the language that's within the annexation agreement. I'm not sure if that's part of your packet, but it reads like this. And it essentially is stating that it is, that that no-build line exists right on the west side of that existing structure, and that no, nothing can be constructed west of that. That was 1986. We had a very different town. We had a very different sense of what this would be, what this property could be used for. We had a very different climate entirely around what Lewisville was like then. Moving on, this is a color diagram of what that looks like, the green being the buildable side, the red being the no-build side. And then that little white parcel, that's the city-owned parcel at the very edge at the intersection of Empire and Highway 42. Keep in mind, this is 1980, 1986, this is one parcel. 2005 comes along, and the owners decide to subdivide. We end up with two parcels, the east parcel, which is now Empire Storage, the western parcel is the one we're discussing. I'm showing the no-build line. I'm also showing some of the existing trees. And then now I have labeled the city-owned property. So that was an old railroad spur that went off to a mine that was kind of out in that open-space area, right? This is how, like, all of our pathways get defined, is how we got there with mining activity. So that is part of the city shops. It is essentially, for lack of better words, kind of a dumping ground of just materials holding over from whatever construction project's going. It's in various states throughout the year. Gravel, barricades, equipment. It's sort of a grab bag of whatever it is that month or that time of year. It is also the back door to the old Public Works facility, and it was extremely useful. I still think it's extremely useful to the city. And it is a non-starter in terms of access. That was one of the first things we asked. One of the complications is that our north, the north property line is also a ditch easement. And ditch crossings are incredibly difficult to navigate. We are burying the pipe. It's still a ditch crossing. There's still lots of logistics with that. We will have a crossing agreement with our utilities, so we will have to navigate that in some capacity. But, you know, lo and behold, we have this no-build zone that's preserving open space, yet we end up with a dump station right in the middle of, you know, two open-space sides, and we have this kind of weird industrial strip that, you know, is everything but open space. So we kind of, I think, shot ourselves in the foot with that move. But it was also a very different part. It was a very different time in Lewisville's history and had a very different context within the city of Lewisville. So we go to the proposed development, looking at the two parcels. Obviously, the western parcel is showing what we are proposing. We are saving a number of the trees. Only a few are coming down. Interestingly enough, the juniper, the ponderosa, all of those end up as ingredients, or at least are ingredients in the spirits that are being used. Whether those trees will be useful or not, not sure, but they're actually all in really good shape, which is kind of astounding. The line that you see on the western side is that edge of where we are proposing development. I will talk about the little building in a little bit. If we take a zoning, if we take that color diagram that I showed you earlier overlaid on the proposed development, that color diagram is the 1980s version. So the red is the no-build, the green is the build zone. Here's what's, this is a really important diagram, and I really want you to take this in. When that was one property, that the proportions of no-build to build look entirely different to what is now a western parcel that is literally cut in half. Now, if you drive by it, and you probably have, you'll notice it's a pretty flat site. However, it drops almost seven feet from west to east. And the profile crosswise, north to south, is really flat. Drainage is hard on this site, and that's the one thing that I think we tend to not talk enough about, is how difficult these kind of sites are for drainage. Also, the other thing that is important, that we don't want a parking lot facing Highway 42. That is not a gateway experience for anybody coming into Lewisville. We want that to be buried within the, kind of the DNA of this property. So, you know, really, the goal is to look at that front part, that west part, as open. We want it to be a high-quality landscape experience. We do want the building setback, but we also know that within this weird triangular shape, we still have to make buildings work. We still have to make parking work, and we still have to do everything that we need to with drainage. So within your packet, you probably saw this as one of the drawings. This is the kind of morphology of what I just walked you through. And so here's what we're left with. Here are the discussion points. These are the things that the Ironton These are the things that the Ironton team and I first started to address with this property. So our site issues. I talked about parking location. Super important that that is not a front and center element as seen from Highway 42. Grading, grading and drainage, the existing trees. Access from Empire. Right now, there are currently two access points with crossings on the drainage ditch. And then this is an entry from Highway 42. So this is a diagram showing how are we going to use this property. And you can see that it follows all the things I just mentioned, starting from east, going to west, parking, kind of on that borderline between what we're proposing as the building area, which is in yellow, and that storage facility, which is the pink area just to the right. And then that open space. And luckily, the, the program that we came up with for this site to accommodate what they want to do with their business really works actually to kind of work with what was already there with this idea of preserving some buffer. I'm not going to call it open space because it's not. It's just a buffer. However, that city parcel at the very top, which is, you know, basically just a weed lot right now, is a really important part of this whole development. That is our entry point into Lewisville. And so with their commitment to wanting to beautify it, whether it's gardens, whether it's their ingredients or not, to, to create a high-quality landscape environment is not only critical to their success with their property development, it also is a huge success for an entry point and a gateway into Lewisville. So I think, I think that there's, there's, there's a lot of win-wins happening with that proposal. All right, so the building itself, this is one building. However, it is broken up into two sides in terms of how they will be constructed. It is all pre-engineered metal building. We do have a circulation core, which is identified in red. We have a main entry point for the public right off Empire Road. We have a second public entry that is sort of embedded between the, what looked like the two main massings of the building. And that is for more or less, more or less the, the event entry point. And there's a strong integration of that circulation going into the distillery so that people can actually go and experience it, take tours, and, and see how, how the magic happens. One of the things that we, that we discovered, and, and this kind of came maybe more from a little bit of my knowledge of what's back on that Public Works lot, is this really special building. And you're going to have to bear with me because it truly is special, but just hang in there for a second. So before we get to that, let me talk about parking. So we have 80 spots provided right now on, on the site. We're fulfilling the, we're fulfilling the program of the building, 75. There is a connection between the two. This is a good aerial photo to see it. That trail that you see going across, that you see going across the Empire Storage Lot, that is a part of their PUD. It was requested, and it was constructed. It is a soft-surface path. We are planning to continue that soft-surface path. There is a short, there is a short segment of concrete that is a drainage pathway. That, all of that is in line, as if someone anticipated a shared parking agreement with the city lot. So anyway, there is some work to do on the fence to provide gateways in. And there actually is an easement for this currently. That was something that was actually recently just unearthed. So as far as this is concerned, that is a public pathway providing access. So we'll have more discussions prior to council to figure out what the logistics are in working all that out. But that's good news. The other part is that we are planning on striping and creating the, the curb cuts for that crossing at Highway 42. Your questions are great around the Highway 42 improvements. A lot of them are mine. I have seen the Highway 42 improvements. I know from what I've seen, it looks amazing. And I'm super excited about it. It is complex. That's a state highway. So CDOT has to be involved. They are extremely hard to coordinate with. However, I think, I think the city's done a great job doing the best that they can with what is being proposed right now. So hopefully, those plans will continue to develop, particularly with the multi-use paths that are planned for, for both sides of Highway 42. There is not much, there's not a lot of detail south of that intersection that I've been able to see, but a lot of that focus is north of that intersection, which obviously has strong connections to, excuse me, to downtown with the South Street Underpass and all the connectivity that we already have. Okay, so a couple images. These are my artistic renderings of what we're trying to create. This is showing that entry off of Empire Road. This is looking at the west side as it's starting to open up into the landscape. And then this is our alleyway. We call it the alleyway. It's kind of a streetscape that will be used for special events and that entry into the event side. So currently, in, in the Ironton facility in Rhino, there, they, they basically occupy what used to be an artist community, mostly metalworks, as I understand it. They have all this super cool sculpture work all over their yard. And we, we have, we're inspired by that. We also plan to have kind of a sculpture garden from whatever we can take with us and, and actually place as part of the entry and kind of that bike and pedestrian experience as you come up to this facility. All right, the long-awaited building. All right, so this is Joe's Steel Shop. Now, Joe's Steel Shop used to be located right on Main Street, next to the Historical Museum, and I can see it barely in this photo right here. The curb cuts are still there. The foundation that is in place where all the canopies are, that's the old foundation for this building. So around 1986, as discussions were happening with the Historical Museum and the need to get this off of Main Street with the proposed expansion of the Historical Museum, this was moved to the Public Works Facility site and was put at the back, and it was used for fertilizer storage. What a great use. It's a totally non-combustible building. And I think at that time, they were like, well, what, what, what could go wrong if it exploded? But over the years, it has, you know, kept its patina. It's really got like this cool kind of charm. It even has like that false facade storefront. So, so when we started talking, I, I went in and saw Bridget at the museum, and I said, hey, wouldn't it be cool to move that building? As momentum gained, I think everybody kind of got really excited about this idea and to give that building a better purpose and a, and a higher use. So the proposal right now is to move that building from its current location, which is at the very back of the Public Works Facility. I'm just going to call it that. I know it's not anymore. And take it down the old railroad spur, cross the ditch, and then place it into open space. It may be presumptive to say that we will have the landmarking capability and the grant funding and everything to make this all happen. And that will all come as a separate public meeting. But should that go forward, and should we really have the ability to honor that building and actually bring it back into the DNA of Lewisville? We thought, why not put it front and center? I know it's in the no-build zone. But I mean, my goodness, nature has taken over that building so, so far already. It's going to feel like nature anyway. And that should be seen by Highway 42. It should be a gateway into the Ironton campus. So our bike and pedestrian path, you know, it's intended that people get to that by bike and, and foot. Like you literally show up as if you're tying up your horse. And it will be used for special events. We do have a road that's planned to get to it from the backside to be able to service it for trash recycling and also for catering, using it as, you know, for weddings, for, for things that are in support of their main event activity. Oops. Our, a diagram of the site showing the building's dark, our pathways in, pathways and kind of soft-surface patios in kind of a lighter pink, and then of course, our parking. Walking you through the tasting room and events building. There's our circulation core. There's our commercial kitchen supporting both the restaurant component of the tasting room and the event center. That's the main hall of the tasting room, indoor version. Restroom core. And then the event room, the multipurpose room with a circulation core going up to the second level with the same circulation core, a little bit of storage restrooms, and then the special event space that opens out onto a rooftop deck. The, the, uh, uh, distillery side of the building has a main entry that allows the public to come in. There are restrooms. There's of course, a core for staff. There is a very large barrel room, which will increase their capacity as well as significantly reduce their logistics of running barrels back and forth due to the city of Denver's Byzantine rules around, around liquor storage. And then of course, their production area. I do want to make a note, this is a good spot to see that loading dock. It is recessed. We can't have screening. Our parking lot takes up the whole space. And it is really important for their business that they have semi-truck capabilities. That, that significantly reduces the ability for landscaping to occur with all the turning radius that's, that's required for that. So the goal was to recess it in, give it a little bit of a, of a hidden, a little bit of a masking. So anyway, upstairs, there is a viewing platform that allows people to see all the cool stuff going on. Restrooms, kind of a administrative core, and then dry storage. Landscape design, this is in your packet. I'm not going to get into this very much. The only important part is looking at that open space. This is a high-quality landscape design. There are lots of eddies and pockets and cool areas for growing and make, and beautifying that environment, both edible landscape as well as just a beautiful landscape. There was a question about that stage. The stage is not intended to necessarily be constructed permanently. It is intended to be movable. So it'll be really just for special events. A couple perspectives going through the building, looking at the east side, looking at the south side from Empire, a little bit closer upshot, and then the west side. Elevation views, which are very much similar to your packet. We did take some inspiration from items around the current Ironton site, looking at some sketches for signage, trying to have some fun and being artistic with how this building gets presented to the public. This is not the first SRU that we've done in an industrial zone. The Climbing Gym up in the CTC was one of the first, followed by Red Garden, which is the restaurant adjacent to the Climbing Gym. Both of those required SRUs. Both of those did not have parking count requirements because there are none for those types. We had to kind of make it up. And then there's a gymnastics facility, and I think a volleyball facility in the CTC. All of those are under SRUs. We feel strongly that that no-build line at this point in Lewisville's timeline is irrelevant. It limits this property's development significantly. While we're maintaining it and really using the whole property to Ironton's benefit, that triangular shape makes it really hard to develop. The drainage, everything about it makes it really hard to develop. And keep in mind, anybody who comes before with a new proposal or PUD will have to go through the same process. And if they don't provide a product similar to this, it's a discussion. And you guys get to have that with those applicants. These are future things that we do not want to talk about or focus on because everybody is very excited about this project. We've already talked about EV stations. We've talked about loading dock screening. Talked about crossings and lighting on the path. We do have lighting planned for the path leading from Highway 42 to Ironton, all the way from the intersection, all the way through the property. The Empire Storage property is not, is not accessible to us in terms of providing that infrastructure in place. Temporary lighting could be placed. Those are certainly discussions that can be had and will probably want to be had just to create safe pathways. But it is important to understand that we don't, we, we do not have that as a very easy ability. And I think with that, I'm going to pause and ask your questions. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Let's take a break until eight o'clock, if that works for everybody, and we'll reconvene with questions for the applicant. Thank you.
Yep. We were talking about the confusion on the buffer line. And I think that the original agreement that we were working on, that the buffer goes away if this PUD gets not approved but developed. And the buffer just gets vacated based on that condition. That's what there was confusion about that, but if that's still a good option for you, we support that option, it's conditional on the PUD development.
Hey Lance.
And then, yeah, hi.
Hey Rob.
Sorry, hey, how are you guys doing?
Good.
We'll be in Stevo January 20.
We're talking about the confusion on the vacated buffer. What I was trying to convey was that we would be very supportive of the agreement, the amendment to the annexation agreement stating the buffer would be vacated with the PUD development.
Really? I just made it today.
So, not adjusting the budget, but they actually they actually then the buffer away, the line, line
It's the last way to Hanukkah.
At that point, then the amendment
So, we draft a language that is very similar, same with the original language. Our original issue is we wanted it to come concurrent with the PUD.
I was going to tell you the same thing.
We write it in the agreement that if this PUD is developed, and we'd have to define that. We also say, you know, you get a building permit, you get a certain then that buffer goes away. So, that's, that was actually our original vision of doing it. If that's acceptable, then we don't have to talk about moving the buffer versus vacating the buffer. We're supportive of that, conditional on the project. So, we could also figure it out when we announce the council technically, the annexation agreement, the council decision.
I wish I could
Well, I mean, I think they can make a record
Well, anyway, I don't want to talk about me, I want to draft on you.
I was like, I'm writing a little note for everybody, but I finished making it, but that was about all I could do.
Well, I wanted to tell you that I always thought you your observations
No, it'll be one resolution, I think. I think Amelia's drafted one resolution.
Thanks, I appreciate you. This has been a good, it's great. You've been, how many years now?
So, they're really just motioning
I need one of these for Allison too. And this is a little, just a little last minute comment, I think.
Say that, of course, the council will draft
I mean, that's
on development of, you know, on development of what's occupancy, then the line would be removed.
The line is extinguished.
The line would be removed. I think that's the best case for you, because then you don't have to have PUD at all, and then if which is that if you don't develop, and then you stop there, either to move or to vacate it. Does that make sense?
That's funny. Any developments can have to come back in.
Yeah, and I mean, any, any, I mean, yes, I mean, it would be we could still request that the line just goes away altogether. I think that's going to continue to be if the line goes away, or in the worst-case scenario, I have gotten calls for a storage folks who want to buy and develop a storage unit there, and that would just be awful, and we are handily tied to actually zone. So, that's my worst-case scenario that I don't want to make sure we can talk against, I don't think any of us want that, really. That's what, so that's it. I think it's, we can distill it down to that. But my opinion there is, and you will have to decide tonight, either there was probably a waiver, I mean, regardless of what say is the city council Yeah, there's a final
And if we decide that we want it going at that discretion.
Yeah, you can still propose that to the city council. I just wanted to clarify that, I'm sorry for the confusion. I think, I think that does require further conversation, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If we move forward, I think
with that I'd like that
I'm going to make
That's a positive step, I think.
Yes, that begins this weekend and ends this weekend.
If you want, I can ask
I posted last year
So, it's restated, so.
And then, I don't know, if you want to respond, you want to respond to that. At this point, that's our restated condition. And I mean, is that more, I think that would be more favorable to long run. We'll just confirm that, with the understanding that our final decision will be against the city council. That's fine, yeah, I mean, you can always amend. Regarding the buffer Yeah, and I just, I can make a statement about that.
Oh, and we have a nod to Hanukkah tomorrow.
Hmm.
Thank you all, if we can reconvene.
Recording in progress.
Thank you all, thanks. Director Zakaro, if I can ask you to provide some comments.
Yes, thank you Chair, members of the commission. You know, during the recess, we talked a little bit more with the applicant and amongst staff about the condition related to the buffer. One of the things that we would propose, so you have a resolution in front of you, and the first condition is that the buffer would move with the PUD approval. An alternative is what I described before, and we wanted to lay that out as a potential alternative, that we could just verbally put into the resolution, you know, if you're so inclined to make that motion, which is that the annexation agreement would be drafted to state that if this PUD is approved and developed, and we work on that language with the city attorney and the applicant, but that would probably mean that it's constructed, that then, at that point, that buffer line could be, would be vacated automatically with the implementation of that PUD. So, that wouldn't mean that the buffer line would go away automatically, only with the implementation. So, we could substitute that first condition with the vacation of the buffer altogether with implementation of the PUD versus just moving the buffer line. And I think the, and I think the applicant, when they go to city council, there could still be further discussion about a full vacation without conditions, that's always an option. But as far as your recommendation, that's an alternative to what's actually, what's drafted right now. Hopefully that made some sense, and I'm happy to try to answer any questions, or we could actually work on some language for you if you'd like.
Yeah, I'm not there yet personally.
On understanding it, or just understanding the proposal?
The basics, yeah, does somebody else?
Chair, just a note of clarification. So, Rob, you're proposing not the buffer, but the no-building zone, is that what you're referring to?
Sorry, I keep calling it the buffer, it's the no-build line, yeah, it's the no-build line.
Okay, no-build zone.
Yeah, that very deep no-build line that's in the annexation agreement.
But it sounds like you're saying a complete removal of it.
Right. So, I think the benefit of that is that if this development actually takes place, then there's, we would anticipate there'd be no need for that buffer, because as, you know, in staff's analysis, we're saying it's respectful of the intent of the original buffer. You know, once this development goes in, so, there'd be no need for the buffer line, because we have a development in place. So, I think, not to make it too complicated, but if you're concerned about that, an alternative is, is that the annexation agreement simply allows this PUD to encroach into the buffer based on the merits of this proposal, but then that buffer line wouldn't go away. I think the applicant, that's not ideal for the applicant, because there's still a really big encumbrance on the property, so they have reasons for wanting the buffer to be modified or to go away altogether. So, that's a whole nother discussion, we'd probably want to get in, you know, the applicant to weigh in on that.
Okay. I think we'll have additional questions for you in a little bit. Maybe we can come back with our questions for the applicant and allow you to address this issue if you want to at this time, or we can just go into questions?
So, ju-just in recognition of the conversation, we did discuss this. Obviously, our intent is that that no-build line is removed entirely, that is the, the preference. However, amongst us, I think, I think for tonight and for the discussion around approving this resolution, we feel like that alternative is, is an acceptable method of moving forward. Just, just to restate, the removal of the no-build line is our priority and intent. I'm not trying to say two different things. We, we're open to the options, but would like to, would like to move forward with the removal.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Crandall, do you, what are you raising your hand?
Just to, can I follow up on this, this topic?
Yeah, why don't we discuss this topic maybe a little bit first before we jump into the other questions?
Yeah, just, just briefly, if you're not planning on putting anything besides the historic structure in the no-build zone, then I don't understand why that's a priority for you, especially if the no-build zone were moved to accommodate the main distillery building.
I think the future development of the property is the priority. And so, if there's a remodel to the distillery, if they need an extra fifteen, twenty feet, and now we have this line that divides it, I think that it creates a sense of arbitrariness for this development that is, I think, inappropriate for the future.
I guess, yeah, question?
Would you change the design if it was different? But I thought, so you're saying the design, you would have designed the building differently on the land had that, had you not been trying to come as close as you could to that no-build line?
Not necessarily. I think the building was designed for the programmatic needs of the, of the business and the development. So, where that building ends is defined by program. If we draw the line right there, then the program defines the no-build area. I think that, I think what's important is, if we're going to get stuck on this little detail, I think you need to look at this property within the context of where it is. Sure, it has a very large open space across Empire Road, which is great. But when you look at the open space that this creates, open space as a buffer to Highway 42, and then you're right, right up against the old railroad spur that's full of city of Louisville property, as well as a lot of very non-open space activity. Then you have our regional detention spillway, then you have open space again. It's not like this is surrounded directly by open space. It is not like this is sitting in an island of open area. It has a lot of context that I think you need to take into account. And you really need to ask, like, how appropriate is this no-build line within the certain context of Louisville? Not just simply because we have a map that says open space, open space, and a buffer. Keep in mind, there is a city parcel. If this doesn't go, more than likely, no one is going to develop that property, and it'll stay a weed patch, or whatever it's going to be. That's still a buffer from Highway 42 to this property. So. I, I, I'm just asking, please do keep that within the context so that we don't get mired in just language.
Thank you. Additional questions regarding this issue in particular right now? Also, if you have any for Director Zakaro regarding this. I'm curious, actually, as to why would the city want to vacate the no-build line completely?
So, I, I think, I would understand that, that that if you feel like the no-build line still has value for a potential future development, then you would probably not want to vacate it completely. I think in staff's, in staff's analysis of this, if this project develops, we would expect it to be there for a very long time, or the building would get reused, or like Mr. Johnson said, maybe you would want to do some building additions, you know, to expand the facility, then that would allow for that to happen. So, I think there's pros and cons to both of the options.
And procedurally, if something like that happened in the future, if we kept it in place as currently proposed, it would certainly be open to a request.
Yes, so, it would still be open to a request, and it would also be any future building, you know, building addition that was more than a minor, very minor building addition would also have to go through a PUD review. I don't know what criteria we would have in place at that point, in, you know, as it would relate to, to that. But I, I think we're looking at this as a, I mean, this is an industrial production development, but it's, it's, it's really designed as an amenity space and a restaurant and tasting room. It's going to feel very different as far as how it interacts with downtown. So, that's what makes us comfortable with, you know, this buffer potentially going away, you know, with this development coming in. There is always the risk, though, that somebody could reuse it for a real industrial use that would be less desirable. But we would have, theoretically, we'd have PUD oversight of those development standards.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions? All right.
I just have one
Please go ahead.
Additional, kind of on that topic. You mentioned the stage area that would not be a permanent installation next to the old metal shop that would be permanently installed. That would not be a separate address or, or, that, that building would still be under the same occupancy and certificate of occupancy as the rest of the development, right? But if, if that no-build line persisted, I guess I just, I wonder if you could clarify about what the process would be for having a temporary installation of things like a stage and what the process would be for having a temporary installation of things like a stage and how that would be essentially, you know, authorized or reviewed by the city on a temporary basis when it, you know, came in and out.
I think from the staff standpoint, there's a couple of options there. We could just write it into the annexation agreement so there was really, you know, clarity that you could have these types of things within that no-build area. I also do think that the no-build area is a no-building area. It doesn't say you can't have landscaping or flat work, you know, types of things. When we had looked at this, you know, well before this development came through, there were questions about what can you put in that area? If you actually look at the language of the agreement, I think staff's interpretation is it's a no-building zone. So I think a temporary structure could be okay. Any type of flat work could be okay as well under even the current restriction, as long as it was truly temporary and, you know, for a particular event.
Thank you.
Okay, blow it wide open for questions of the applicant as it relates to any aspect of the current proposal. Think back to before a break.
I had a question. So I appreciate the level of detail that you came with in this application. That does show a lot of thought and a lot of effort that goes into it, and obviously with the conversations that have gone through with staff as well. In the level of detail that you've provided, both the second-floor plans for both buildings had various defined uses, but I didn't see any elevator. Are there no ADA requirements? And I just say that because kind of everything is predicated on this design, right, and this application. Are there no ADA requirements for access to those second floors?
There isn't for the distillery side in terms of access because of occupancy. We are talking about the accessible component for the event center and tasting room. So we have space. We have space for it, but we took our plans as far as we could until we knew we have our approvals.
Okay. And if there were a requirement for ADA access to that second floor, would that significantly change the content of the application that you've put forth?
No, zero. That's an internal building component, and it would be under the building permit process. That does not comply, or that is not, that's not a component for the PUD. The floor plan and architecture are exhibits. They do not get filed with the PUD.
Right.
They are only for describing the project. They are for your use. They do not get memorialized. So our building permit process will cover that. The parking is important, and that parking gets covered.
Okay. And that's where I was thinking about the interaction, but, okay, I appreciate it.
Great. Thank you. Additional questions? Commissioner Crans, please.
Thanks. Are the exterior lights going to be dark sky compliant?
Yes.
Cool. That was, that's, and then I have a question for Laura, the head distiller. I was just wondering if you have to, from your distillery in Denver, you probably know this, do you have to have any environmental permits, like air, water, anything like that in order to, for this? I'm not familiar with what external emissions you have from a distillery business.
Not to my knowledge, in Denver, there's wastewater components that will comply with. Air, there was like a, wasn't it like a smell requirement or something with Denver?
There's not a particular, like, permit that we have to apply for, but we do have monitoring, CO2 monitoring, things like that, that we do have to install in different parts of the?
And no VOC?
I don't believe so, no.
And then just a couple more questions on the operation side. Do you, how many trucks a day do you envision coming out of that loading dock on Empire Road?
Right now, we receive probably two trucks a month. So not a whole lot. We try and limit how many deliveries we get just for ease of operations on our end. And then our distributor uses small vans. So the big trucks would really only be for our grain deliveries, which we limit to two times a month.
It seems like my questions are pretty brief ones, so if you don't mind, I just got a couple more.
Sure.
The other one was, are you, if you're going to have an orchard on the city open space, are you aware that the city has, we have herbicide? We've banned certain herbicides from use, so I don't know if those are important for fruit trees. But if those are important for your fruit trees, it might be worth coordinating with their open space further on that one.
Yeah, I'm honestly not sure. We would probably have a landscaper come and maintain those trees for us.
There's no glyphosate for, and no, certain insecticides are banned on city open space properties. And then, and I just had a final question is, if you, the most, the open area that you have, I guess this would probably be back for Mr. Johnson, but the open space area is going to be crusher fines? Does that provide, that's going to provide the same drainage as grass would? Could you explain a little bit about how the drain, how that would be, like, how that would be maintained as an open area in that no-build zone? How would, would that have the same impact for drainage as maintaining it as grass?
Okay, so your question is, do the fines provide the same amount of drainage as a grass surface? Yeah, it does. And in fact, that area that we have defined, I'm happy to bring this slide back up, it actually is a very large, shallow detention pond, and it is used for our stormwater quality. So if you look closely, right along the Empire Road side, there's an inlet and an outlet into the ditch. So, you know, it'll operate just like a typical large detention area that would be seeded either with native or mowed seeds. That's not what the program wants to have, is grass to be mowed and maintained, but to have kind of more of an open plaza area with landscape islands and surrounded by landscaping.
Thanks.
Any additional? That's all good, thank you. Additional questions down here? Seeing none, I would like to open up a public comment. Please limit yourself to three minutes. Begin with your name and city residence. I believe we have at least one card. Welcome up, Ms. Bedell. When we start, do you guys have the cards over there?
Hi, my name is Cindy Bedell. I live in Lewisville. Just listening to this tonight, I just had a question. Why was there a no-build line? What was the purpose of that? And why would we take that away? Because once we take that away, once we remove the no-build line, we can't put it back. So I think it'd be important to be cautious and leave that no-build line in there. And it sounds like for the current development, it would be just fine. And what we should be approving is the current development, not possible future expansions. We should look at what's before of us tonight, is what I'm trying to say. And secondly, the dark night sky lighting would be wonderful if you could actually can put that in there as a requirement that's adjacent to open space. I go out there quite a bit at night because I have storage in that storage facility. And so I believe there's wildlife in the area. It still has a dark night sky feeling out there, so it'd be really important to maintain our natural features. And I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Summer?
Sherri Summer, Lewisville. I would like to advocate strongly for maintaining the no-build zone. As we see, applicants can come and request a waiver, and that's what's happening tonight, that we're having requests for waivers to go into the no-build zone. So I think rather than putting the burden on the city and saying to eliminate that entirely, I think it would be completely reasonable and fair to suggest that we maintain the no-build zone and that the applicant could come forward in the future to request a waiver, and then that would give more protection to the city and, I think, quite a bit of freedom to the applicant as we see that this is coming forward tonight. I think that the argument that drainage is difficult on the site, and that's kind of a weird site, makes it even more important to keep that no-build zone because we're building into the drainage, if I understand correctly. And so I don't really see why a property where it's difficult to have drainage, that we would be opening the door to more and more building that make drainage even more difficult. I can, you know, I can sort of understand the idea of an encumbrance on the property, but I guess when we, when properties are acquired, they're, they are what they are. And so I don't think that a certain hardship or perceived hardship is necessarily, creates an obligation for the city to eliminate that issue. I was curious about the maintenance agreement. It was talked about, the maintenance of the parking lot and the trail, but it was never clear to me at least who, how that would work. Like, if that's hammered out yet, or if that's going to be happening in the future. I really appreciated Commissioner Choi's comment about the safety of the crosswalk and Highway 42, and I understand that that is a state highway. However, improvements along there will be paid for with, you know, multiple funds and funding sources, including the city. And so in the future, it's not hard to imagine that we will need to do upgrades. And I think for the interest of residents, like I talked to a lot of residents when I was campaigning, who said, you know, I can't really afford to live here and prices are higher, we need to think about how costs associated with development get paid. And I don't think that that being a state highway would prohibit having any kind of chipping in to pay for very probably likely needed improvements. Often, we think about waivers as being innovative and making the code more up-to-date, but I really feel that requesting, eliminating the 50% rule of plantings is not innovative. I think that's going backwards. We need more plants, not fewer plants. Heat island effect is real. And just because we have the priority of placing a lot of buildings and not the value of plants, doesn't mean that they just need to go away. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And do we have anybody online? No? Okay, thank you. Do we have any additional questions at this time? We're going to move into applicant response and closing statement. As you approach for the closing statement, though, I would like to ask an additional question, yeah, about the proposed parking lot. And sometimes those small plantings, if they include shade in a parking lot, are very beneficial when it comes to urban heat island, and curious as to why you didn't want to do that.
So the waiver is not reducing parking lot plantings. It is reducing the plantings around the building. We have irrigation easement on the north side that also provides our fire and emergency access around the building. There is no room to plant within that area. The other side, the east side, that is budding up to the parking lot with the loading dock and the logistics of providing what's needed for the building, there is no ability to plant along that edge with the access that we do need. We are not short on plants. We are not skimping on our landscape. It's just condensed in other locations. So it's, I think there is an assertion being made that we are reducing the landscaping and thus reducing the quality of landscaping. It's just being focused in other locations so that the rest of the site can work. The drainage does make a big deal. That parking lot is tiered in a way where one side's lower than the other. It makes that median actually a little difficult between the two parking sites to landscape. We are still landscaping it. We are still trying to maintain a high quality of parking lot landscaping. We are introducing a lot of trees into the site in addition to the existing ones that are currently there. So I think, I think, you know, studying the landscape plan more closely, those become much more apparent. Does that answer your question?
Thank you, yeah.
Welcome.
Yeah.
Your answer confused me, though.
Okay.
Because it says that you are requesting landscape waivers from the requirements pertaining to plantings interior to parking lots. That is correct.
So?
So those, so I was just confused to your answer to what Chair Brown and I said.
Yeah, so let me clarify. We have plantings in that strip between the two parking lots. We don't have as many as is required because it's narrow, because it's tiered, because it's split between the two sides specifically so the drainage will work on the site. So that is the clarification. It is a technicality.
Last chance, seeing none, please.
Okay.
Closing statement.
I was going to mention those in my closing statements. I do want to reiterate that when that no-build line was created, there is no documentation from the city records of why it was created. There's no discussion. There's nothing for us to read around its creation. It is an arbitrary line. We, obviously, from the design that we presented, feel like open space, open area is important, and we have provided that. That is a very important part of this design. And I think our engagement with the city-owned lot as a continuation of that is important. I realize that we are proposing to put a historic building in the middle of that. It complicates the whole no-build discussion. It kind of makes it feel a bit irrelevant, but it would feel odd to have that ability to locate a historic building, presumably with grant funding, presumably as a landmark structure, and not really make it special, not let it be front and center and let it be a real public-facing building, especially one that came from downtown and wants to be closer to downtown. This is a special business coming to this property. This is one that has found a secret ingredient to make this thing work. And I would like, I would like us to welcome them to our community with the ability to do these things. We are talking about small points. We are talking about a big leap forward with a really great business coming into Lewisville. So with that in mind, we're looking forward to your deliberation and hopefully a positive vote. So thank you.
Thank you. And with that, does staff wish to address anything or have a closing statement?
No, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing, and the planning commissioners will deliberate on the evidence presented. During deliberations, no further public comment or other testimony or evidence will be received. Do I have any volunteers to begin our discussions, deliberations? Yes. Commissioner Basket, please.
I'm in strong support of this project. I think that it would bring a unique venue to Lewisville where people would, you'd hear people say, I'm going to go up to Arnton in Lewisville. I mean, I can totally visualize how this could function as an extension of downtown, connected to downtown, connected to the Aquarius open space, a very active community that uses the pass around and near there. I am not at all uncomfortable with moving the no-build line and with the way the resolution is currently written, which says moving the line to accommodate the existing building and to accommodate the historic structure. I think that adding the historic structure to this is part of the special sauce that would make it even more unique and attractive to people visiting. I am not disturbed in having less no-build area because I think that the intention, what little was in the memo, what little we know about why that no-build area was created, is to create a gateway. And with the proposed landscaping and the proposed use, I think indeed it enhances the gateway. the gateway way beyond what it looks like today. And God forbid we wind up not getting this proposal and we get an industrial proposal in there later on, that's not going to be a gateway. It's going to be industrial use. So I think that concludes my comments. I'm in support of the resolution as it's drafted. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Howe?
Go down the line as you say. So I looked at each of the codes, there's the PUD, plat and easement vacation, the SRU criteria, and the annexation agreement amendment. I thought regarding the PUD, I thought it was compliant to all six waivers, and usually I'm a stickler for the waivers, but I thought they met all the IDDSG waivers. The plat and easement vacation, I also would agree with Commissioner Basket that, I agree how it's written. I like the no-build zone applying to the proposal as, as applied for and not removing the no-building zone. The SRU criteria, allowing the tasting room, I thought it met all the criteria. The only one that I had mentioned in my comments was the adequate, number five, the adequate amount and proper location of pedestrian walks. We just want to make sure it's, if people are going to walk along Empire Road, as I've driven down that road, I always note how close the road is to the grass and property lines, so you just want to make sure that's safe. But it seems like the applicant is, understands that concern. And the annexation agreement amendment, yeah, I agree with the way it's written to not remove reference to the no-building zone. I think this is, as I've said in the past, a win-win-win. When I think about the codes, I think it meets them. When I think about the benefit to the city, I think it is a benefit. It is an improvement to that land and a good land use for this, this proposal, Ironton. I think the citizens will benefit from it, and I'm sure we'll get maybe some revenue from the city for it. So I think that you get, you get wins for the citizens, applicant, and the city. So I'm in favor of it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Osterman?
Thanks. Let's see, I'm also really excited about this proposal. I think it's a great addition to our community. I really appreciated the presentation from the applicants. I think, I echo the sentiments of the other commissioners. I guess the one piece where I'm personally still just slightly confused because a lot of different things were said was, again, about the no-build line. And so I wanted, I guess what's confusing me is in our packet, it sounds like the annexation agreement would be amended as currently stated to, to move the no-build line. And if that is the case, that means that if the property was sold and then a future developer were to come, that there could potentially be an industrial build. But I'm not, I'm not sure. Like I said, I'm a little bit confused still. I think that what makes sense, as the other commissioners said, was to, to have the amendment language in the PUD, so a waiver for this particular use case. Because the use case, I think that they have demonstrated the reason why the line needs to be moved to accommodate for the building, all that makes sense. And so I'm just wanting to double, triple verify that the, the annexation agreement is not being amended, if that makes sense. Maybe I'm just overly confusing things.
It got a little muddy, not you, the whole issue got a little muddy, and it's not you. So Commissioner Krantz?
Yeah, I'm not confused.
If I'm not confused, the annexation agreement would be amended to move the line. And if I'm understanding that all correctly, I completely agree with Commissioner Howe's analysis that, I'm fully in support of this. It sounds like an amazing addition to our community and a great thing. And I, I'm in support of this and the condition that was put on by staff. That support to approve this with, I would like to see this approved with the condition that staff has recommended.
That it be moved.
That the line be, that the line, that the end.
Not obliterated.
Yes. And there'd be an exception made for moving the historic building.
Choi?
Thanks, Chair. I think I share the sentiment that I'm in favor of the application with the other commissioners. A couple of things that stand out for me in particular is a pretty glaring lack of any real justification as to why a no-building line was established to begin with. In the original exhibits from the annexation, there doesn't seem to be any justification as to why an arbitrary line was drawn to begin with. It just says, we're going to draw a line. And, you know, coinciding with where, where the original plating was, you know, and the intention a long time ago with the inclusion of the eastern lot that's the storage area now. You know, one could argue that, yeah, you wanted to create a little bit of a buffer, but then zoning it industrial essentially kind of, in my mind, flies in the face of having a buffer of anything, right? So I don't, I don't understand why the no-building line that seems to be arbitrarily applied was applied to begin with. And along that vein, I would be, it would take a lot to convince me that maintaining an arbitrary line for essentially an arbitrary reason, not knowing what, if any, future development could occur there, 10, 15, 20, 30, 50, 100 years from now. You know, it seems a little bit of a difficult argument to make, from my opinion. I actually appreciate some of the landscaping choices and the design elements in the various areas of the lot as they're envisioned to be programmed for, you know, activation as event space or the buildings. I will say I'm appreciative of the permeable pavement for the parking areas in the actual parking spots, and I'm somewhat disappointed in the choice of asphalt as opposed to the concrete where, you know, the higher loading areas are rated for the trucks at the back or north end of the, north end of the lot. I think in terms of the conversations about, you know, impacts for sustainability for the development, the drive aisles are such a small area of what would be developed that it would be an incremental cost to go with concrete as opposed to black asphalt. That's my personal opinion. But aside from that, I think it's a very thoughtfully and tastefully done application for a really improved use of what the current site is. And I think it extends and has the potential to continue to develop, you know, the east side of the downtown area, which has struggled compared to the main street area as well. So that's it.
Thank you. I also find myself in favor as written. At this point, I'm viewing the no-build zone really as a giant setback. And not, we can, we throw around the word gateway a lot. It's more just kind of about highway beautification and how we view Lewisville from different angles as we drive through and approach it. So I'm in favor of keeping it, but in the moved location. Because I think, not so much for this project, but for potential future, I'm not comfortable with kind of carte blanche of allowing that construction up until a standard 15, 25, whatever the setback would be, if that was taken away completely. So with the two conditions as presented, I'm in favor of it as is. Any other deliberations, thoughts, or motion?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to check with Commissioner Howe. Did you want to have, yours was just a comment, but not something that you wanted to be part of a development agreement or something like that? The asphalt versus concrete of the parking lot? I mean, were you, you weren't, that was just kind of like, that was a suggestion, but not something that you wanted to memorialize in a development agreement or anything?
That's ultimately a design decision. I don't think it's our place to dictate what materiality is used if it's acceptable by code.
Okay. I just wanted to, thank you.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that, yep. With that, I would entertain a motion.
Chairman, I can make a motion if you'd like me to. Motion to approve Resolution Number 19, Series 2023, a resolution recommending approval of final planned unit development, special review use, plat, easement vacation, and annexation agreement amendment to allow development of a distillery, tasting room, and event space at 1303 Empire Road.
Thank you, Commissioner Howe, and a second on that.
I would second that, Chair.
Commissioner Choi, and a second?
Just a point, do I need to specify the two conditions? Yeah, maybe I should have said that, with the two amendments, two, two amendments, two conditions.
Two conditions, yeah, as proposed by staff.
And that I will second.
What's that?
That I will second.
Okay, thank you. We have a second. With that, a roll call, please.
Commissioner Basket?
Yes.
Commissioner Howe?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Krantz?
Yes.
Commissioner Choi?
Yes.
And Chair Brown Eyes?
Yes. Motion carries. Look forward to hearing more about it as it moves forward. Thank you all. Let's see. How much time are you guys hoping for on our next item of business?
I think it'll depend on how much you want to discuss it, but we think it's pretty straightforward. So maybe a half hour?
Okay.
At the most, maybe?
Sounds good. Let's, why don't we take a quick five minutes? Four minutes? Four minutes, we'll start at five till. All right.
Recording stopped.
Thank you. Good night. Thanks.
Thank you all. Great, if we can reconvene, thank you all.
Recording in progress.
I will now open the public hearing on a discussion of a expedited PUD process, Resolution Twenty, Series Twenty Twenty-Three, regarding revisions to the expedited planned unit development process. The purpose, I will give the full script at this point, though. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive evidence regarding the application materials and provide a forum, public forum, for all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before the planning commission. The procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. First, there will be a presentation and testimony by city staff, followed by questions from the planning commission to staff. After this presentation, members of the public who have joined the meeting in person by computer or telephone may speak regarding the application. Anyone who would like to speak is asked to complete a speaker card. Use the raise hand function of participating by computer or star nine if calling in by telephone. Please limit your comments to three minutes per person. The purpose of public comment is to receive public testimony and not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. The applicant and staff, the applicant, well, which is staff, will then be allowed to make a closing statement. I will then close the public hearing and no further testimony or other evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. The planning commission will discuss the matter and may approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record. All testimony must be presented after stating your full name and address or a city of residence. Does anyone participating in this hearing object to the procedure I have described? Seeing none, do we have notification? Joe, sorry, do we have the notification?
I'm sorry, yes, there is improper notification, yes.
Sorry about that. All right, and do any, do we have any disclosures? Seeing none, we'd ask you to please proceed.
Thank you. So Jeff Hurt with the planning division. So we have an ordinance before you tonight to update the zoning code for the expedited PUD process, and all public notice requirements were met for this case. And so only about a five-minute presentation here, but a bit of background to kind of get you back in the thirty thousand-foot PUD headspace. We just looked at a PUD, obviously, but as a reminder, PUDs are essentially sort of site plans for individual sites with their own zoning standards. They do require, most PUDs do require preliminary and final, that means four public hearings and four milestones. There is currently a process in the zoning code for an expedited PUD process where you go straight to final, but it's very limited in scope in terms of which projects are eligible. So just a visual, not intended to be legible, but there's all different types of PUDs. You've got larger projects like this one on the screen, where you have multiple blocks, multiple buildings, and then you have less impactful, smaller ones like this one, for example, where you have one commercial building on one site, no plating, things of that nature. So there's a huge scale of what is considered a PUD in Louisville. And so the proposal tonight, in terms of the overall purpose of it, is basically just to broaden the number of projects that can access this expedited process to go straight to final, in recognition that many PUDs can be adequately evaluated against city rules and policies at the final stage. As a reminder, before going to building permits, this is the initial entitlement for the property. So that's the overall purpose, is to allow broader access for appropriate projects with criteria and protections in place. So some of the highlights of the proposed ordinance, the actual language is, of course, in your packet, but one is to maintain some of the current thresholds in terms of the size, so keep the seven-acre threshold. Don't have a lot of background on where, how we landed on that, looked into it, but we are proposing to keep that, seems reasonable. Also to keep the threshold that the property has been previously subdivided. And so the proposal also would eliminate that the PUD, this is where you get into some of the issues we've had in the past with, with how limited the scope is of these projects. So the proposal is to eliminate that the PUD must be in a general development plan with specific type of zoning, and that limits geographically to only a few areas of the city where there's GDPs in and around the McCaslin corridor, some parts of the CTC. It's a very limited scope in the city geographically, what is actually in a GDP. And then to actually add in as part of this proposal, that any plating as part of the PUD would have to be below the minor subdivision threshold. So that's essentially two lots or less minor plating is happening. So happy to talk about how we landed on those specific criteria in terms of what we believe as staff has a better sort of metric for what an impactful project is. So happy to get into that. Example scenarios of how this might apply, which is a good lens to look at it through, these scenarios are actually a bit refined from what was in your packet, but a couple scenarios that would be sort of on the line, where it'd be, we would wonder if it would be eligible. One would be if there's a proposed commercial building, so one commercial building on one site, say there's two tenant spaces, so two uses would go in there. Less than seven acres already subdivided, more than likely yes, that would be eligible for this expedited PUD process. I'm happy to talk about the logic behind that. Where you get into a possible no would be a scenario where if you had like two buildings across two different blocks, where you're creating new blocks, new streets, things of that nature, that would probably not be eligible for expedited PUD because you'd be talking about street connections, things of that nature, and you probably would be plating beyond the minor subdivision threshold in that case. Happy to talk about that kind of scenario, too, and how it would play. So staff's recommendation is for approval of this resolution, and happy to answer any questions of planning commission.
Can you jump back to the previous slide, please? And I'll welcome questions from anybody who may have met this point, but Commissioner Basket.
Jeff, you just alluded to the seven-acre, where, what does that have to do with, how is the seven-acre threshold chosen? Does it have some nexus?
It's what's in the current ordinance, and that's not a good answer, but, you know, absent doing a whole analysis of different sites, and we haven't found any good record of where that seven acre came from, we looked at staff reports from the, whatever it was, nineteen ninety-three ordinance, there's no mention of that. So we're proposing to keep it, just to, as a part of this sort of cleanup. We're not getting it perfect, but we're cleaning it up.
Well, that relates to my other questions. So is this part of a bigger picture of code revisions?
I don't, we don't have any sort of like, you know, go ahead, Rob, if you want to, you know.
Maybe it's a Band-Aid of code revisions. I think there's been discussion, including on city council work plan, so it's pretty formal, about when we come out of the comprehensive plan, entering into a comprehensive code rewrite. So I think if that actually comes to fruition, this would probably be more of a Band-Aid, and we could revisit this in more detail, more comprehensively. So I, I think this also codifies some of our practice. You know, you see PUDs in the Carrow Tech Center all the time that are single lot PUDs. The practice is, we take those straight to final. We're trying to put that into code, because right now there's code provisions that probably wouldn't support that technically. So this, this is a little bit of a Band-Aid, it puts into code what our practice is for these single lot commercial developments.
Thank you, Rob. In this, I don't know which staff might be able to answer my last question, is, did staff receive feedback from the development community specifically saying, hey, why don't you fix this, it's killing us? And did staff get any comments about this proposed revision from the development community saying this would be helpful?
Not on this specific, you know, public hearing and notice and all that, but we definitely hear, Rob has heard more than me, but we're, you know, we're in this comp plan process, we're doing interviews with developers, we're doing interviews with developers all the time. There's a bigger picture concern about our PUD process that is a more holistic, I think, conversation that needs to be had, but certainly there's comments from the development community that many projects can be adequately evaluated with a final PUD process. And, I mean, it's, it's a bit of an assumption, because we don't have a written comment or anything like that on the specific item, but I think we feel confident.
I just wondered, what space this was happening in?
Yeah, and I just want to add, I mean, I think we're doing this, too, because we feel like, you know, a lot of, a lot of the reason that we have these codes is to protect the neighborhoods and the neighboring property owner and the community as a whole, and make sure that it's meeting the intended, you know, vision for the city. These are small enough, and that's probably has something to do with the seven acre. I mean, you could pick lots of different numbers, but the idea, if it's, if it's a big project, it's going to have a bigger impact potentially on the surrounding, you know, the surroundings. And so at some point, you probably do want to do that. I think from staff's point of view, these are small projects, so it's not all about making the developers happy, too. I just want to make that clear. It's, it's about, you know, we think these are small enough projects, this would capture the small enough projects that a single PUD hearing would be adequate. I've seen what we, you know, I think the benefit of a preliminary requirement, a lot of the time also, is that an applicant can not, they can, they can give a smaller application, they don't have to invest in full construction documents, full civil documents, for example. So there is a benefit to the applicant to do a preliminary, but on a small, single lot development, it really doesn't help them at all. It just adds months and months and a couple of public hearings.
Thank you. That actually answers my question.
Thank you, Commissioner Choi.
Thanks, Chair. I'm curious, not knowing our full code by heart, are there any sections in the code, and is there any intention, well, before I ask the question, let me preface it by focusing on the example that you, you put up there. You know, you have two, two different examples, one that would or one that would not ostensibly, but you use the words likely or unlikely. And I, I frequently find a little bit of difficulty in dealing with certain, you know, code interpretations by various municipalities or authorities having jurisdiction, where, you know, there are those qualifying words like likely or unlikely. If the intent is to, as Director Zakaro puts this, to try to codify the current practice, is there, is there in our current code in other sections, or is there an intention in this section to have something in there that includes, you know, at the discretion of, you know, the director of planning or some other entity within the city that would provide the determination as to whether it is yes or no, not likely or unlikely?
Yeah, so we could pull up the specific language, there's just the high points, but it's written as a show, be eligible if you're under seven acres currently, that's what it is, if you're, if you're already subdivided and you're not plating beyond the minor subdivision threshold, which is pretty clearly defined. And then there's, there's a statement at the end where the director can make the determination regarding material impacts as it relates to basically public spaces, so utilities, streets, open space, things of that nature. And material change in that language is parallel language to what we've used in other parts of the code in terms of our ability to say what is significant or impactful. So that's the intent, is for that to be a bit of a catch-all, but for there to be a little bit of flexibility in there, but a little bit more predictable than what we have now.
So is it reasonable to anticipate that for every application that would come through that would potentially qualify for an expedited PUD, that it would still be reviewed through the hierarchical approvals within the planning department, and there would be a decision made as to whether it would follow a traditional preliminary and final or try to be proposed for an expedited?
Yeah, I would envision, for example, so if, if the director determined that something was eligible for expedited PUD, that would come to planning commission still, right, as a final PUD. So as part of that final PUD analysis and presentation to the commission, that would be what I would envision a finding in the staff report that would say, this is why, you know.
Okay, thank you.
And at that point, we could still have the option of continuing because we wanted certain questions answered, that there simply wasn't enough evidence for it in that expedited hearing.
Absolutely, yeah. It's still, to clarify, has a public hearing for planning commission and city council, so we just skipped it at more granular level of detail, rather than that preliminary, more high-level conceptual thing, you know.
Thank you. Additional questions for staff, please, Commissioner?
You, you mentioned that, that this might have, that there might be a specific application of this downtown? In the, it says, it's, one of the reasons for, for this is that it's, this excludes properties near Old Town?
Yeah.
Limiting the expedited, limiting the expedited PUD process only to properties governed by GDP, PCDZ, or excludes Old Town. So this would expedite things in Old Town. But are there any areas that are seven acres that would make a difference there?
Yeah, I think if I'm remembering that part of the staff report right, it was, it was an example of the areas, how much of town is technically not eligible for an expedited PUD. So if you look at the map of where GDPs are, which I probably should have put in the staff report and up here, it's pretty limited to areas around like McCaslin. It excludes areas, including, but not limited to, Old Town, portions of South Boulder Road, chunks of the CTC where you would have a lot of these sites eligible. So Old Town was just sort of one of several areas in town, you know.
So it's an example of an area that would not be, that already is not eligible for expedited PUD?
It's a gray area, but by the strict letter of the code, yeah, it would not be eligible.
And it still wouldn't be with this change?
It would be.
Oh, it would be?
Yeah, yeah. So you no longer would have to be, so with this change, you would no longer, for example, a site would no longer have to be in a general development plan, which general development plans only apply to certain areas of town, like in and around McCaslin, CTC, and things like, so I could have a better job of explaining it, but it geographically opens up more areas of the city with the same sort of thresholds.
So there are areas that would, where a PUD could be put, brought to the planning commission and city council, that's, that's seven acres or more, or?
If it's seven acres or more, no matter where it is in the city, it would probably not be, it would probably still do the same thing as now, preliminary and final.
Okay.
Yeah.
Additional questions? Commissioner Howe?
I think I know the answer to this, Jeff, but if you could just clarify, there's no way that this expedited PUD would go straight to the city council?
I don't.
It would still have to go through the planning commission?
That's, that's correct.
It, it just becomes a final PUD, which planning commission and city council, but always planning commission first, yeah.
I just wanted to clarify that, thanks.
Seeing no additional questions at this time, I'd like to open it up for public comment. Please limit yourself to three minutes with name and city of residence. Can we double check on Zoom in this summer?
I'm sorry, what?
You have more presentation?
Uh, no, that's, no.
Okay, great, thanks. Thank you for the presentation.
Oh, thanks. I just had to say something because I'm still here. Sherri Summer, Louisville. At first I was kind of thinking, well, this is interesting, because they're eliminate, they're adding the concept plan review, which is an extra step, and a good, it's kind of a good check, and one that developers want, so they get more informed, and then taking away some of the parts of this, you're sort of expediting the PUD, but it actually does make sense. I mean, it, it does seem to eliminate some reasonable hurdles, I believe, as long as you stick to the criteria of like, one building on seven acres. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate it. Do we have a staff closing statement? From the chair, yes.
The only closing statement is we recognize that this isn't perfect, nor is the PUD process as a whole, but we do think it makes it better and more accessible and more efficient for both staff and planning commission.
Thank you. With that, then, I will now close the public hearing, and the planning commissioners will deliberate on the evidence presented. During deliberations, no further public comment or other testimony or evidence will be received. Rachel Whitwell may be on the right side of the dais here this evening. Commissioner Choi?
Thank you, Chair. I do like the bumpers that staff is proposing to keep in the bowling lane of the PUD process, you know, having some thresholds where stuff still goes through it, I think is appropriate, and I also appreciate the elimination of undue burden, where it doesn't add a lot of value to the process for smaller projects like this. So I'm in support.
Thanks. I'm in support as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Osterman?
I'm in support.
Commissioner Howe?
I'll say I'm in support, but I do have another comment here. And, and it's a little bit off of the, the typical discussion about this, but I, in the discussion of PUDs in the past, I believe the PUDs have a lifetime of two years, and then you have to renew, three years, and then you have to, thank you, Director Zakaro, for that, and then you have to renew them. I believe there should be a whole, that should expire, and I think that would be an incentive for developers to build within that time. And then they, at that time, if it expires, they have to start from scratch. I think that's a disincentive that encourages developers to do what was agreed on in the time that is proposed. I believe that this, this proposal, we've been doing this a few times, people have been coming up and saying, yeah, let's, let's skip this and go right to the final PUD. So I don't think this is actually anything new. We've, we've actually done this a few times, I think.
Thank you, Commissioner Basket.
I'm in support.
Thank you. I also am in support at this time. I appreciate that it probably, hopefully, maybe makes things a little bit less cumbersome with no additional loss to the city, really, that we still have the opportunity to review it and ask for additional information if we need to. So it, to me, it's a, a good solution for now. We'll see what happens in the future for the larger, bigger picture issue of code itself. So with that, I would entertain a motion, please.
Sure, I'll.
Commissioner Krantz?
Oh, go for it.
I never, I never make motions, because I'm not always, I stumble over words, so this will be my first and last motion here. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Twenty, Series Twenty Twenty-Three, recommending the city council approve an ordinance amending Title Seventeen of the Louisville municipal code to revise the expedited PUD process.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Osterman with the second. Thank you all both so much. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Basket.
Yes.
Commissioner Howe.
Yes.
Commissioner Osterman.
Yes.
Commissioner Krantz.
Yes.
Commissioner Choi.
Yes.
And Chair Brownice.
We'll see what happens in the future for the larger, bigger picture issue of code itself. So with that, I would entertain a motion, please.
Sure, I'll.
Commissioner Krantz?
Oh.
I never, I've never make motions because I'm not always, I stumble over words. So this will be my first and last motion here. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 20 Series 2023, recommending the city council approve an ordinance amending Title 17 of the Lewisville municipal code to revise the expedited PUD process.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Osterman with the second. Thank you all both so much. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Baskett?
Yes.
Commissioner Howe?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Krantz?
Yes.
Commissioner Troy?
Yes.
And Chair Brownice.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you all for your work on this. No, really. Thank you. With that then, we will look at planning commission comments. Anybody like to make any comments?
If I, if I could use a few moments of your time to make a few acknowledgements, that would be great. One to the city of Lewisville. I'm grateful to have been given the opportunity to participate as a planning commissioner for six years. To my fellow planning commissioners, past and present, as well as the planning staff, I've enjoyed our discussions and value your dedication to city and code, even though our numerous remote sessions during COVID lockdowns were a hurdle. To the citizens of Lewisville, thank you for your integrity and effective participation. I always enjoy reading, enjoy reading your comments and have read each and every one. And finally, for my Ward Two constituents, thank you all for your compassion, encouragement and support. Let's help get everyone back to their home.
Any additional planning commission comments? Commissioner Krantz, please.
Sure. I, I appreciate you saying that because I feel the same way, though. I've only been on planning commission for two years. The staff has been incredibly helpful and my fellow commissioners have been wonderful in teaching me things along the way. It's, it was a steep learning curve to join the planning commission and I, you know, like Steve says, good luck moving forward. I also, you know what? I'm really glad that you said that about the public because Sheri, thanks for being here for so many, you know, meetings. And I, like Commissioner Howe, like, we like to read all the public comments and it's so much better when there's somebody in the room.
Yes.
Yeah, thanks all of you guys.
I, I want to, did you? Yeah? Sure. Now's a wonderful opportunity, yes.
Yeah, I wasn't totally sure if this was my opportunity. So tonight is my last planning commission meeting and I just wanted to say how much I've really appreciated the opportunity to participate on planning commission and work with, with all of you. It's been a wonderful experience. I just really respect this commission, city staff and all the work that you do and echo what Tamara said since we came on at the same time about this steep learning curve. But it's, it's really been wonderful and I, I wish I could continue, but I, I will continue from afar and participate. Thanks.
Thank you. Additional thoughts? So I actually wanted to, I do want to thank everybody. The more I thought about it, really, it's, it's a celebration of participatory democracy, which I think at this point in history is more important than ever. And so while I'm thanking all of the commissioners and staff, everybody who's participated, even people who've just watched at home and never even spoken up, but then in particular, the people who do show up and, and speak out and share your thoughts. I know for a fact that we are a better community for, for all of that. So while, while I want to thank everybody for their past year of work on the commission, it really is a much bigger issue at hand and I'm very grateful for that. Thank you all. With that, we have any staff comments? Oh, Commissioner Krantz, please. Oh, okay, yeah. We'll let you do that too. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, very quickly, thank you to the commission. You all are volunteers. You do amazing work on behalf of the community. We're all lucky to have your dedicated service. Every year we do what is very much a token of the appreciation. I wish we could do more, but we do have a token of appreciation from the city for all of your efforts. We've got some amazing huckleberry pies from the city for each of you to pick up before you go home this evening. So thank you.
Thank you. With that, Commissioner Krantz, a motion?
I move to adjourn.
Do we have a second on my left?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Happy holidays.